This time, I'd like to call to order the Harden County Board of Education meeting. And if y'all will, we'll stand and say the place with the flag over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. And number three is board commitments. Don, you have the board commitments there?
I do. To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Schools Board Team commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district, and support district goals, and support board decisions.
All right, thank you. And now we have recognitions, and Mr. John Wright is going to take care of that. And I assume we have a resolution we need to pass?
I'm sorry?
We have a resolution we need to pass?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If you don't mind, please. Thank you.
All right. Somebody make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recognitions. All in favor, sing five, saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. So we have the board meeting at the Performing Arts Center twice a year, February and in May, because we have a larger number of students to recognize. And so that's a contributing factor as to why we hold it here. But also, so we want to recognize that group tonight. But we're going to start off with our traditional HCS Stronger Together Award winners. And again, we have three folks who are two individuals and an organization that really contribute to the students and staff of Harden County Schools. So Ms. Rachel Ritchie, if you're here, I know you are, because I saw you. Come on up, Rachel. Rachel is very familiar with Board of Education meetings. We've seen her before, and one of the board members will give you a plaque, Ms. Rachel. Rachel Ritchie is a North Harden High School senior. She's a very unique student. She excels in the classroom. She maintains a 4.0 grade point average and a very rigorous senior year schedule. She has also worked most of her life to give back to her community. When she was just in third grade, she organized a fundraiser to create an ADA accessible playground in her hometown of Vine Grove. Rachel accompanied her goal of building, or accomplished her goal rather, of building this playground, but she hasn't stopped there. She recently began fundraising to gain an additional playground with fun summertime splash pad. Her senior guidance counselor at North Harden calls Rachel "the total package." She has a heart of gold, an excellent work ethic, an impressive resume of extracurricular activities and skills. And Mr. Chairman, I contacted North Harden. I said, "Give me one student that we can nominate for this award." And hands down, they said Rachel Ritchie. So congratulations, young lady. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Higgins. Samara, where are you? Come on up. Samara Higgins is accepting an award tonight for her father, Quentin, who could not be here. I think he had a graduation to go to, Samara, is that right? Yeah, he had a graduation to attend. But so she is representing her father, Quentin Higgins, who was a Harden County Schools bus driver. Quentin is a community leader who is passionate about alerting everyone of the dangers of driving while intoxicated. Quentin is a survivor of the 1988 Carrollton bus crash, a tragedy that deeply affected our community and this school district. Now Quentin has created an opportunity to share his story. He purchased and equipped a Ford 8700 bus as a learning tool to teach about the bus crash entitled "27 Reasons to Never Drink and Drive." This bus is identical to the one that he and so many other children were on that fateful May 1988 evening. It has photos of the passengers and some that were taken the night of the bus crash. He is working on a newer bus which shows his dedication to the cause. Quentin represents our district with pride, enthusiasm, and professionalism each time he speaks, and he works hard to carry a wonderful message. We appreciate you, Samara, and your dad. Thank you so much. Ms. Kendra Scott, I know you're here. Come on up. Kendra is here tonight representing the Harden County Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is a good friend to this district and to me personally, and so was Kendra, a great friend to Harden County Schools and to me as well. I'm privileged to know Kendra. In addition to honoring students at its monthly membership luncheon with the Chamber's ABC Award and strong presence in many partnerships, the Harden County Chamber of Commerce provides three $1,000 scholarships, one for students at Central Harden, John Harden, and North Harden for our work ethic certification program. The Harden County Chamber of Commerce has been on board with this program literally since day one. It reinforces the importance of soft skills in the workplace and places a strong emphasis on how critical those skills are, what HCS calls the Great Eight Standards. If they are to succeed in a very competitive job market, they must have these standards, the students. At one time, the Chamber bought the cords to give to graduates, but for many years, it's increased its investment by offering three $1,000 scholarships. HCS was grateful to the Harden County Chamber for its strong dedication to students and staff this district. Thank you, Kendra. Thank you, Chamber of Commerce. Okay, so we are ready now to recognize students. And Ms. Horton and Ms. Paulie are going to bring those in by groups. So first of all, we have students from Bluegrass Middle School. They earned the state championship in You Be the Chemist contest. So they're going to say their names and then walk across, and Ms. Johnson's going to give you a medal, okay?
Emma England.
Rom Dantourthy.
All right, let's give these young men a hand. Thank you, gentlemen. And this next group of students are students that were selected to attend the Gattan Academy at Western Kentucky University. There were five students that did that, but this young man has shown up tonight in the deluge of rain. So go ahead and cross there and introduce yourself.
My name is Brayden Scott.
Congratulations, Brayden. Joining him on that list are Bailey Sadler, Jocelyn Sadler, Messiah Domande, and I hope I pronounced that name correctly, and Jacob Sanders. So congratulations to those folks. So Mr. Wells is here. We will see John Harden represented greatly tonight. They have brought several students. So Mr. Wells, your Bulldogs have done well this year, as you know. So this next group is from John Harden High School as well. They earned awards at the Kentucky Technology Student Association Championships. Go ahead, ladies and gentlemen.
Caleb Dees.
Jacob Weiss.
Michaela Little.
Samantha McNichol.
Emily Leese.
Ella McConnell.
All right, let's give these young men and women a hand, please. These students, these John Harden JROTC students competed at the Air Rifle Championships and brought home several big trophies. Matter of fact, a state championship trophy. Go ahead, guys, and introduce yourselves.
Armin Yun.
Caleb Codill.
Ashlyn Chevala Grobes.
Jenna Ho.
Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. Very good. Very good. All right, all of these young men and women are from John Harden as well, and they all won gold medals at the Winter Winds Tri-State Championships. So go ahead, guys, and introduce yourselves.
Anaya Abbott.
Ryan Clark.
Mark Craft.
Nathan Dorr.
Owen Dotson.
Zachary Os.
Denzel Francis.
Hope Brett.
Kaliel Horn.
Kalani Joyner.
Ryan Langsath.
Lysel Collado.
Isaiah Perez.
Miley Redlov.
Ezra Tabbert.
Brendan Biesenior.
Congratulations, guys. So Mr. Lovins has brought this, since we have a larger group behind the board here to take pictures, moms and dads, so whenever you're done, we'll dismiss them. Everybody good? All right. Thanks, guys. Congratulations. All right, Ms. Paulie has next brought in the Winter Guard Tri-State Champions, or Silver Medalists, also from John Harden High School.
Gwyneth Abbott.
Shad Abreu.
Summer Caswell.
McKendy Cross.
Nico Lundin.
Alena Strange.
Jada Whitaker.
Congratulations. Great job, ladies. All right, Mr. Ellis has been busy this year. His students have done exceptionally well. This, Mr. Chairman, are the percussion Tri-State Championships, winter percussion Tri-State Champions. They've earned bronze medals there. Go ahead, guys.
Sophia Bradford.
Kami Cantwell.
Evan Clark.
Dante Cooley.
Cheyenne Crowley.
Christian McKenzie.
William Pontius.
Caleb Johnson.
Ivy Tabbert.
All right, let's give those a great big hand, please. Hey, these students, hold on just one second. Ah, I know you. All right, these students are from John Harden High School. Again, these are DECA students that have earned first, second, and third in various competitions at the state DECA Championships. Go ahead, young lady.
Samara Higgins.
Reyna Joyner.
Samuel Salgado.
Jennifer McNichol.
All right, let's give those, ladies and gentlemen, a great big hand, please. All right, great job. All right, now these students are from all three of our high schools. They have placed very high in Skills USA state competition in various activities there. So you guys go ahead.
Lydia Doty.
Sean Thomas.
All right, let's give them a great big hand, please. All right, Mr. Chairman, my job is finished, but I believe Ms. Quarter and Mr. Sutton are going to recognize some more students in our Focus on Academics, so.
And thanks to the parents, and congratulations for your students doing great jobs out here that's already received an award.
Good evening. No time like this time of the year to recognize more students and their accomplishments on their hard work this year. We have three different groups of students that we would like to highlight for their recognitions that they're going to receive across the state. The first group is our GSA, Governor's School for the Arts, was established in 1987 as an arts program funded by the Kentucky Center for the Arts. Kentucky's finest young artists are selected to participate in a three-week summer session. There's an application and a rigorous audition process. This year, we have five rising juniors and seniors selected out of 512 across the state. I'm going to ask our GSA selections to come forward to receive a medal and tell us either why they applied or what they're looking forward to this summer at GSA. We do have a few students who could not be here, but tonight I would like Jordan Bradshaw to come forward. She's being recognized for creative writing.
Hi, everybody. Hi, I'm Jordan Bradshaw, AKA Mashiah Bradshaw, and I applied for GSA in Creative Writing Path. And the reason why I applied is because I really wanted to apply myself because I've never had such a big opportunity handed to me. And I thought, well, I should really take good advantage of this. And that's why I applied. And when I found out I made it in, my heart almost went through my chest. But that's all. Thank you.
All right, this next student has actually been accepted to both GSA and GSP, which I'm going to talk about in a little bit, but because she's coming forward with GSA. Kayla Hamilton has been accepted for instrumental music and woodwinds. Kayla?
Hi, my name is Kayla, and I applied for GSA and GSP because I want to be challenged in something I'm passionate about. And I love music and I love academics. And through a lot of thorough deliberation, I decided I'm going to choose GSP because I can't do both. So, yeah. All right, thank you.
Those who could not be here are Kennedy White, Kaylee Spratt, and Kyras Ray for GSA. Now I want to recognize our GSP students. The Governor's Scholar Program was established in 1983 as a program designed to academically challenge, encourage self-development and leadership while instilling a desire to help other students. The state receives over 2,000 applications from outstanding rising seniors. Approximately 1,000 of the 2,000 are selected statewide. This year, Harden County Schools had 52 applications at the school and district level. To put that in perspective, we only had 25 to apply last year. So we've doubled our applications this year, and we're very proud of those juniors to put their foot forward. It's a very rigorous application process as well. Because we had over a certain amount, we had to form a committee at the district level. The state only allows us to submit 37 applications to the state, and that's based on the enrollment of our junior class across the district. So we submitted 37 applications, and I'm pleased to announce that 13 juniors were selected to GSP, and we also had six alternates. I'm also going to ask them to come forward to receive a medal, state their name, and tell us why they applied or what they're looking forward to. Well, Kayla Hamilton's already gone. Diego Harada.
Hi, I'm Diego Harada. I applied to GSP. But I was a bit hesitant to do it at first. I wasn't expecting myself to make it, especially considering I had an older brother who made it, and I didn't think that I had made as big of an impact as he did. But I received a lot of support from my community, and they all pushed me to apply. And I was obviously really shocked whenever I made it.
Kendall Ashlock.
I'm Kendall Ashlock, and I'm most looking forward to just meeting new people and making new connections at GSP this summer.
Chip Collins.
I'm Chip Collins, and I look forward to having good food for five weeks at GSP and meeting new friends that I'll talk to for the rest of my life. So, thank you.
Shiloh Denaway.
Hi, I'm Shiloh, and I'm looking forward to studying new things that I wouldn't normally get to study at school with people who are interested in the same things as me.
Zoe Graham.
Hi, I'm Zoe, and I applied for GSP because I wanted to challenge myself and just put myself up to the rigorous task of applying. And I'd only heard good things from GSP alumni, so I wanted to hopefully experience that myself. So I'm very excited to go this summer.
Anna Hinkle.
Hi, I'm Anna, and what I'm most looking forward to about GSP is the opportunity to connect to people all across the state who share the same interests and passions as I do, and to do that in an environment where I can learn new things because I like learning new things.
Other juniors selected to GSP who could not attend tonight are Faris Taut, Rebecca Covington, Alana Thompson, Jacob Jerenick, Patrick Lally, and Annie Yates. I believe a few of those at the end are at Regent Tennis tonight. So congratulations to them. All right, our final student. So many of you have already heard the amazing feat of the next small group of young men. It's been on social media and in our local newspaper. Less than 0.5% of all students who take the ACT nationwide score a perfect 36. The national average score ranges between 19 and 20. We have four young men who accomplished this outstanding accomplishment, and by doing so, it allowed them to present themselves as very competitive candidates at all institutions nationwide to include the elite and select colleges and universities. They may also expect a sizable merit aid. I am sure it didn't come easy, so let's bring up, we have one here tonight, three couldn't be here, but we're going to bring up this young man and have him tell us either how he prepared for this or what he plans to do after graduation. So Nathan Turlington from Central Harden.
Thank you. I'm Nathan Turlington. I'm a senior at Central Harden and the Gattan Academy that just graduated, and I'm going to be going to the University of Kentucky this fall.
I will also add a piece that Nathan's mom and Nathan shared with me out in the Commons area. Nathan will be leaving for Kazakhstan this summer for seven weeks to study Russian. So we wish you the best on your travels and your experience there over in Russia, okay? Congratulations to Nathan. The other three young men who could not be here tonight who scored a perfect 36 were Sam Christensen, Tate Lewis, and Sammy McDowell.
One second for these GSP and GSA students. I want them to hear something. I only have, as they're walking out, I only have one complaint about GSA and GSP, and that's the fact that when my daughter went to GSP after the five weeks, she didn't want to come back home. So all I'm asking you to do is about week three, "Oh, Mom and Dad, I really miss you. I can't wait to get back home." Now, that won't be true, but tell them that anyway because my kid did not tell me that, so I didn't, I just wanted to, please do that for me. I'd appreciate it. Last up tonight, and that is true, I'm not making that up. She wanted to stay in college. Guys, come on up. Our last tonight, last recognition. Very proud of these three guys right here. And just come on up here, we can see you. I want everybody to see you. I might go and get your award here in a minute. That's good, right there. Now, if you all can think back with me, back it was probably around December, maybe January, we did a mid-year reading counts, reading matters, who had the most points in the district at your school. Y'all remember that? We brought a representative from every school. And one of the parents came up to me after that. I think we had all 12 elementary schools represented, and then one of the parents said, "Did you notice that the top reader, right here at the midpoint in the school year, are pretty much all girls?" And they said that to me. I went, "Well, okay, I didn't pick up on that, but thank you for pointing that out." And I guess somebody else listens to that. They went back to the school and posed the challenge to the boys. They were a little bit behind in the reading. So we did our last final count around May the 3rd on points on who was leading across the entire district, not just at their school. And these three guys right here were our top three readers in the district for reading counts and accelerated reader. So I want to give them a plaque tonight. Third place overall in the entire district with 520 points from Rackliff Elementary School. We have Landon Smith. Give it up for Landon Smith. Second overall in the district with 538 points. The runner-up this year, we have, from GC Burkhead, John Warkey. Come on up, John. All right, and the top overall reader. This shows that I'm getting old. I had his dad in school, probably about 20 years ago, at James T. Altman Middle School. And proud to see his son up here doing great things for Harden County Schools. So the top reader, district champion with 549 points from GC Burkhead Elementary School, Thomas Taylor Klein. Give it up for Thomas. Now, I believe Thomas is a fourth grader. Is that right, Thomas? Is that right? He said he wants to be the two-time champion, so he's coming back next year, GCB, to try to win a second. So good luck to him. All right. Chairman Weiss, thank you. That's all the recognitions we had tonight for Focus on Academics. Congratulations to the parents also. Extra help you've helped those students with because they makes great students. Thank you all. Did you finish that Focus on Academics also? All right, recognition of visitors. Do we have anyone to sign in? No? Thank you, John. All right. Excuse me. Construction updates. We had our noon meeting today at College View, and we had updates from the construction manager. They feel like that the Central Harden project is progressing well, maybe a little bit ahead of schedule with the exception of the geothermal drilling, which that's supposed to start back next month again. We had a contractor to leave us, and so we've got another one coming in. So anyway, we feel like the project is on schedule or maybe just a little bit ahead, so hopefully it'll stay that way. So basically, Rob, he was not here today either. We, I don't know if he had other commitments, but anyway, we had, that would have been the only thing that we would probably have updated on anyway. Consideration of the consent agenda. Constructional services, approval to apply for a waiver for the elementary virtual school through the Kentucky Board of Education, and approval of a new contract with New Tech Network, and approval of a contract with Power School Evaluation System. So that covers the instructional, and we're approving the start and end times for all Harden County Schools. And I don't have that pull list here in front of me, but for 2020, 2022, 23. So it seems like these years change faster than the months around here. But, and approval for a West Harden Middle School eighth-grade team to travel to Washington, DC, and that's in April of 2023. And we received an update on SROs. That's our School Resource Officers. Going to have a little more associated cost next year. What's not going up. And then we got the monthly financial reports, orders of the treasure, school activity fund balances. And we're going to prove, if we, everyone's in agreement on this tonight, approval of the '22, '23 tentative budget. It's this time of the year again, and usually it's somewhat based on what last year's was with a little bit of tweaking, and then we still have more time to finalize it. We're, approval of a SFCC offer of assistance for construction to Hardin County Schools. We have discussed at quite length today the approval of a 2.5% cost of living adjustment. That's going to be the tune of about $3 million for Hardin County. The SEEK funds was increased by approximately that amount and we're investing it into our employees. So that, we're taking care of them the best we can with what we have. So anyway, that, that'd be a little, a little bit of a cost of living adjustment there. Hopefully it'll help out on the higher gas bills and everything else that we're seeing today. We're approving the initial BG1 for North Hardin High School Athletic Turf Project. We have chose to do turf on the three football fields. We let the principals and I think the athletic directors attend a meeting and so we would have a fair draw of the three high schools. And I'm understanding that North was number one and John Hardin was number two and Central will be number three. So that's, that's our plans is to put turf on the fields. It's, it's almost everywhere now and we didn't want to tackle all that in one year. So we're going to try to do it over a three-year period. And of course, this is tentative of bids coming in. It's going to be acceptable to the school board. We got some change orders here for, on the Central Hardin renovation project. And there's a couple of change orders clearing up the BG4 bid package on East Hardin Middle School. It takes a while to get all those things finalized and we're just clearing those out. Approval of child nutrition FS460 paper supply bid. And the small equipment bid is recommended for child nutrition. And approving the continuation of the summer child nutrition program feeding sites, John Hardin, North Hardin, GC Burkhead, Lakewood, and Cruisin' Cafe. And that'll be from May the 31st to July the 22nd. And those lunches will be served from 11:00 to 1:00. So we give students opportunity if they need a lunch or whatever through the summer feeding program, have a good nutritious food for them. And then human resources, certified personnel actions and, and certified continuing contracts. That's about it. In the consent agenda, site-based council meetings, minutes, we have those pack information. And we're approving the minutes of the regular meetings that we had. That's under action items, so that'll be later here. Anyone have anything they want to pull out or talk about or discuss a little more? Feel free to do so. I think everyone got worn out today, didn't they?
I was going to say, I think we had a pretty long discussion earlier today and not sure there's much more to discuss at this point.
That was 11:30 to 3:30, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, a long, long, but sometimes there were some things in there that I wanted to discuss along with the other board members. We spent a lot of time on the 2.5% cost of living. And, you know, those things, once, once we're done, we have to be prepared for the next year and the next year because they're ongoing and I think salaries are about 80-some percent of our budget. And it's, it's not, nothing that we can not take lightly. We need top-notch employees and we want to pay them for their work. So we, we tried to adjust some salaries and get things more substantial for employees. If nothing else, we need a motion to approve. I move we approve the consent agenda as discussed.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Not? All in favor, second, five, saying aye?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. And I was aye in there. I think I failed to vote myself. All right, action items, approval to give the superintendent the authority to lock in petroleum prices with petroleum traders for a period not to exceed 18 months. And that's another item that we had quite a bit of discussion on today. We locked in our fuel prices last year. We've saved over a half a million dollars by having it locked in. We know that it's a lot higher now and we don't know what it's going to be exactly next year. But we had a quote today and as we talked about it, when they returned the phone call to them, it had gone up a dime. So this action would give superintendent the right to call that shot when we think we need to lock it down. And so it didn't, it didn't happen today, it won't happen tomorrow, it'll happen in the next day or two, next week, when they think that this trader prices. But the way it looks with the new price that we had today, if we could have voted on it at the meeting and said, "Go with it", it would be about a million dollar savings if fuel continues to be as high as it is, so. I, it's, it's hard for me to believe that somebody's going to gamble on a lower price than what it is right now. But petroleum traders has offered to do that, so, but like their name says, traders, so. The 10 cents we lost today. You need to, any more you want to come in on the other?
Just know that we are always, and the board is always looking out for the best interest of taxpayer dollars. And so that 10 cents difference would equate to a $33,000 difference over the 18 months. And so we wanted the opportunity to get the best price for that and so this allows us to do that.
Charlie, do you need a motion for that? Yes, we will. That's an action item. Do you have one there or do you? Yeah, you.
Okay, yes. I'll make a motion then that we approve to give the, we get that, that we give the superintendent the authority to lock in petroleum prices with petroleum traders for a period not to exceed 18 months.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Last year, for a little more information to the public out there, last year when we went, decided on this program, we paid about 10 or some few cents higher than the daily market was at that time. But now fuel is as high as $3 higher than it was. So for a month or two or three, we paid 10 or 12, maybe 20 cents a gallon higher. But it really paid off in the last few months, so. It, it's, it's a gamble, it's a good program. I don't think we will see fuel back under that $3 mark. And it's something we have to budget for, so it makes it easier for us to budget at a price that's fixed than it is knowing, not knowing where the end's going to be.
I think the other important part of that is, I know many of you are aware that the legislature gave us additional funding for transportation costs and these increased fuel prices will definitely absorb that additional funding that we paid. So they moved us from about 63% funding of transportation to about 73% funding of transportation. And so that cost will be reflected.
Right. Yeah, and as clarification, the, the part that the state doesn't directly fund just comes from our general fund. So it's money we can't use for something else then. We have to use it for the transportation because we've got to transport kids.
All right, we have a motion and a second to give the superintendent authority to lock in prices whenever they feel is the best day next week or whenever. And all in favor, second, five, saying aye?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right, we're new business and do you want to have any new business they want to bring up? Not superintendent's report.
I really want to just share with our public how much we appreciate the community's support during our work ethic certification interviews this year. Those were held in person. We did work ethic certification interviews with all of our fifth graders in Hardin County, all of our eighth graders in Hardin County, and our seniors in Hardin County. This is that experience. Students come, they share about their GPA, they share about their accomplishments, they share about their goals, and it is just an incredible process for those students. I'm sure you've seen on social media some of our high school seniors putting down on a board what they plan to do after graduation with that work ethic certification. They are guaranteed an interview with our work ethic certification partners. The grade eight standards that we talk about, we start this in kindergarten and these continue all the way through high school with the capstone project at the high school. This year, we had the highest number of seniors earning work ethic certification and that is through the hard work and dedication of English four teachers at the high school who really work with those students. They are given the opportunity to fill out a job application. They have to put references down and sometimes they have to hound those references to complete those referral forms for them. And so it really gives them that life experience to go back in and check in. But for the public, the grade eight standards are attendance and being on time, personal responsibility and accountability, academic performance, work habits and persistence, punctuality, preparedness and organization, respectful interactions and communications, cooperation and teamwork, and community service. The folks who are in our community said if we can have employees come into them with these standards, they can take care of the rest. They will train them in the skills that they need. But these are skills that really need to be taught by parents early on and then in collaboration with the school district to help hone in on those very specific soft skills. However, they will tell you if the students don't come with those, they're very hard to teach. And so we really appreciate all of our schools and the hard work they've done toward that work ethic certification. So, thank you.
Thank you. This will be our last meeting before we graduate. I don't know what the numbers are going to be, six, seven, 800 of students, I'm assuming. We probably get.
Very close to a thousand.
More.
Yes.
Four, yeah, yeah. But anyway, it's, it's, I guess, a sad time of the year for some people when their seniors leave in high school and it's, it's a happy time. But anyway, there's been a lot of great comments out there. I noticed a student graduated from Western last week or so there and they made a comment about EC3, about how much they were helped at EC3. And when you hear those comments come back from a college student, I mean, it's really important to us. Our teachers, our counselors, I think all our high schools are doing an amazing job in trying to get those students out there in the right direction. Some of them just, you know, they're, they just need to go into workforce and do well and, and some of them are getting training at EC3 and, and even in schools. There, there's other training there that's available, so. Congratulations to all of them. We'll have graduations going on starting May the 21st, be the Hardin County High GED Graduation Program. And, and May the 23rd, Project Search graduation at EC3. And North Hardin's May the 27th and John Hardin, May the 28th. And, and May 30th will be Central, right?
Yes, sir.
I missed, I don't see Central's on there. I must have skipped over, there it is, yeah. So all, three of our high schools will be sending students out of the system and new ones will be rolling in next year. Right. Anything else there? That pretty much covered the board calendar too while I was breaking on our students there. But we don't need an executive session or anything. All right, we're down to a motion to adjourn, I say. Move we adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, second, five, saying aye?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank y'all for coming out. Have a dry ride home.